Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, December 7th. Mrs. Kennedy, if you please unmute yourself and call the roll, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Redden?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Wilbur Duck?
I have a seat in place of Bruce Menon, yes.
David Hawkeizer?
Here.
Sheila Spalding?
Here.
And Mr. Cole?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. We have a quorum. Could we please stand and look at the Wilbur Duck screen for the, to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The flag, United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation-
One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty-
With liberty, with justice-
And justice for all.
For all.
Thank you all. Mr. Menon, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Mr. Duck has given me permission to run the meeting, so I appreciate that. Just so it doesn't seem totally bizarre, I did have to change my Zoom name for another set of meetings that I was in and forgot to change it back, so.
It's fine.
We have a public comment, and I think, Brian, are you handling that?
Yes, though I don't see any hands. If anybody wants to make a public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. There's one. All right, this is Sarah Hall. Sarah, you should be all set.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. So I had prepared these comments in advance, and I do just have to say the fact that you're meeting remotely instead of in person did give me pause, but I am going to go ahead with my prepared comments and hope that they are still appropriate. So, Sarah Hall, I'm at 8 Arthur Welch Drive. I really appreciate all the hard work and thoughtful planning that's gone into the hybrid program that's currently available to all students. Despite rising infection numbers and percent positivity, I am urging you to stay the course. I recall hearing in a previous meeting that you would move all students to remote learning if the city passed 4% positivity. At that time, we were under 1%, and so 4% was hard to imagine. But now here we are, listed at 4.08% positivity in the Globe last Friday. However, as far as I am aware, there has not been a single instance of transmission in the schools. The hybrid program is not responsible for our rising community spread. In fact, as I explained in my letter to the Daily News last week, the opposite seems to be true. Based on the infection numbers presented at your last meeting, the rate of infection in the remote student population was 16 times higher than in the hybrid population. This fact supports the idea that students attending school are learning and practicing critical public health skills, not only keeping them safe at school, but carrying over into their time outside of school. So going remote at this point would be a real disservice to our children and the community at large. As long as there's no transmission in the schools and we have the necessary staffing to keep the hybrid program running, we should absolutely do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I have Monica Studer. Monica, you're all set.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is Monica Studer, 7 White's Court. I just wanted to reiterate the point that Sarah made before. I understand that the metrics might give you the authority to go fully remote, but I also wanted to point out that school is going extremely well. I personally, in our preschool class, which are the very youngest learner, we had a positive case. There was zero transmission in the school, and this was the case for the very, very youngest one. So I think there's a lot of evidence that school is actually doing the opposite of contributing to the spread. So I want to make sure that you remember the facts that are out there and also the needs of our kids. They need to be in school. So I thank the school committee for all the hard work, the school nurse and everyone. I understand it's hard, but I think everyone is doing a really good job, and I think there's no reason to change course. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica.
I don't see any other hands. If anybody else would like to make a public comment, please make sure to raise your hand, or we will be closing the public comment portion of the meeting. We need like a countdown chime or something.
Or duck.
Yeah. Jeopardy music.
Yeah, I see nothing. So Bruce, you want to go there?
Sure, we are, we are going to close down our public comment. For those who are still listening, stick around for the superintendent's discussion of COVID impacting the schools, which will occur later as part of his report. We have, we have our consent agenda to move to. I believe, Mr. Cole, we do have warrants.
Yeah, we have three warrants. The first one, I moved that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $6,069.75 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Second.
Hearing no discussion. We, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Fully unanimous? Thank you.
The next warrant, I moved that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $29,496.64 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Redden. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition? Thank you.
And the last warrant, I moved that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $459,232.32 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, none. Thank you very much, Mr. Cole. As of tomorrow morning, the warrants will be at their usual table in front of the central office. If people could come down there and sign them, I would appreciate that, and I'm sure that the vendors we owe money to would appreciate that. Thank you very much. We have minutes from October 19th and November 16th. We'll take the minutes of the 19th first. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a second.
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 Any feedback, comments? I do actually have one if nobody else does. Yeah, this would be the 19th, October 19th.
What page?
The very last, the, next to the very last page of the 19th. Where my name is listed. Just Bruce Menon asked her to talk about reaching out.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I, to sort of better capture, I think, the spirit of the conversation, I would suggest the following changes. I would remove, in the second sentence, the third sentence, a lot of the most common concerns is that, I would remove especially with, and I would start out by saying, the younger group is often restless. I think acting out has a different feel to it. I'm not sure that that's what we were talking about. We were just talking about how difficult it is for keeping those kids focused, and that Nancy had recognized that and the district did. So I, again, that would be a lot of the most common concerns is that, is the younger group is often restless. Often, yeah, often is restless. And just can't sustain sitting in front of the computer. And it's just a matter of just shaping the language a little better to reflect the conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other comments?
On page three of the minutes from the 19th, it says in the middle there, it just says David Callahan. That should say Brian.
Again. Some scary hybrid.
Well, we're not calling you Duck.
Right. Yeah, who might have, who might have made any comments about that, right?
Sorry about that.
No, no.
It's okay.
Terrific. Any other thoughts on that? All those in favor of the minutes as amended, accepting the minutes as amended, say aye?
Aye.
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 We're all in favor. Thank you very much, Mrs. Kennedy. We now have the minutes of the 16th. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Terrific. Any comments, thoughts? Hearing none, I am pleased to ask us to, our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposition? It's fine. I will turn this over to Sean Gallagher to introduce our student rep before we go to executive session, so we can report.
Yes, this is, Sierra, you're out there, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
Awesome. Well, thank you for joining our Zoom. And you all remember, Sierra did a great job at our last school committee updating us on the high school and different programs and activities that are going on. So I'll turn it over to our student report.
All right. So last week, the high school started its community read using the text Jess Mercy. Books were distributed to all students during the week, and the teachers led an introductory discussion during Friday's Clipper Block. Every two weeks, you will use time in Clipper Block to reflect on what we've read. Though Color Day did not happen before Thanksgiving, the class officers and advisors have organized a School Spirit Color Week for December 14th through 18th. The fun class competitions were announced last week and will involve a class video, a virtual scavenger hunt, and a toilet-to-you drive for the Pen Gill House. Each year, the Photography II class does a project that uses photography to connect to global themes. This year, students participated in the Global Oneness Student Photography Contest. Students participated from dozens of countries, and 10 winners and 10 finalists were selected. Aidan Hodai-Booy has been selected as one of the 10 winners for this year's competition. The National Art Honor Society continues to run their artist workshops. Last week's guest, Ryan Kelly, coached students on sculpturing from wire. There are several different service opportunities happening in December for students. First, Gear to Share has been organized by Luke O'Brien, who is collecting slightly-used sporting equipment. This collection started just before Thanksgiving. Back in the summer, Gear to Share collected close to a truckload of either new or slightly-used sporting equipment for children in need. The Leos Club just started their annual toy drive. Items can be dropped off at the high school, and students will be wrapping them the week before winter break. Also, over the past two weeks, members from the Interacts Club have helped with the Rotary Santa Parade and supported an event with Turning Point to help individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The high school continues to remind us how students can earn credit for participating in service activities. 75 hours of documented service is equal to two and a half credits, and 150 hours of documented service is equal to five credits. Thank you.
Very much, Sierra. Yeah, do we have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of legal concerns and contract negotiations? And we will be returning. Second?
Second.
Great. Can I have a roll call, Mrs. Kennedy?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Let me get, I got to go one page back. All right. Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Yes.
Mr. Redden?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
And Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
All right, folks, we will drop out of this meeting, go to the executive session, and then return.
And the meeting will actually still be running while we are not here, so people who are waiting will be seeing Tyler, I believe.
All right. We've returned from executive session. The next item on the agenda is to have our public discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. I'll give a little background for the community, and, and then I will walk us through the evaluation for the community. If you have additional comments to add, please, please feel free during the presentation. And at the end, we will vote to accept or not accept the evaluation. And we will then move on to a discussion of two contract items. One is the balance of the final year of his contract. There were some items that we missed, including compensation. And we will then briefly discuss and vote on a new three-year contract for the superintendent, extending him out to July of 2024. In terms of the evaluation, we usually do this on an annual basis. The state has evaluation forms that they use for every level in the school district, from teachers and professional staff all the way up through the superintendent, and in fact, actually even for the school committee. And we have wrestled with these forms for a number of years. They still haven't worked all the bugs out of them, as far as I think we all are concerned. In particular, this year, because of the pandemic, two things happened. One was that we did not evaluate the superintendent before his contract moved into his final year in July. We normally would have done that in the spring, but I think we were busy in the spring and opted not to evaluate him at that point. So we have evaluated him now, and in fact, actually, that's, that kind of has given us the advantage of being able to include some evaluative commentary on the work he's done during the pandemic here on behalf of the district. We do plan to evaluate the superintendent again before his, before he rolls into his new contract, and that will be in the late spring. The other thing that happened was that the state said you don't have to go through all however many items. They really narrowed it down to us looking at the superintendent's performance based on four standards. Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community, and professional culture. I have prepared three documents based on the feedback that I have gotten from the school committee in terms of the evaluation. These documents, once we vote to accept them in public session, will be posted on, I believe, our website and on the city's website. The superintendent, unlike just about anybody else in the community, has a public evaluation. We do it publicly, and we report it out publicly, and then it gets posted publicly. I think he's the only person in the school district that that happens for. But these documents will be available to the community. There are three documents. The first document is a simple numbers tabulation of the evaluation items and where the school committee fell in terms of how many voted for proficient or exemplary or any of the other categories. The second document, each school committee member is encouraged to make comments that evaluate, that elaborate on the scoring that they've done in a particular section. Our practice has been to cut and paste every single one of those comments without editing any of them and putting them all together in one document for, for the superintendent and for the community to see. We don't identify who has made what comments, but what we did do this year was we assigned a color of, a text color to each school committee member so that you can kind of walk through a particular individual's comments in a number of different areas, which I think will be helpful to, you know, encourage us to sort of look at how we consistently worked across the board, what we really felt were strengths and challenges. So again, in the, in the four areas, let me, let me do the spoiler at the beginning here. It was the unanimous feeling that the school committee felt that the superintendent's performance was proficient at his job. And that is, that is the standard that the state expects a superintendent to be performing at. And, and we were unanimous in our belief that the superintendent is performing proficiently. And in fact, there were a number of other items that, that we identified that we thought his performance had been exemplary. And that in fact, in some of those items, the majority of us felt his performance had been exemplary. So, so sorry to spoil the suspense, but we've got a proficient superintendent who is not only meeting state standards, but, but exceeding them in our opinion in some cases. The broad, you know, we look at professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. And our feeling, and again, not everybody rated the superintendent, so the numbers don't always add up to seven. But for professional practice goals, two members felt that there was significant progress. Two members felt that he had met the professional practice goals, and again, these are, these will be listed on the evaluation form. And two of them felt, two of us felt he had exceeded them. For the student learning goals, even, even with the complication of the pandemic, five of us felt that there had been significant progress made on those goals. Two of us felt that he had met those goals. And for the district improvement goals, one of us felt there'd been some progress. Two of us felt there'd been significant progress, and three of us felt that he had met those district improvement goals. The broad category is the standard one of instructional leadership. The school committee felt that the superintendent unanimously felt that the superintendent had performed proficiently in instructional leadership. And again, that's the state's sort of baseline. That's where they expect superintendents to be. Under management and operations, four of us felt that his performance had been proficient, and three of us felt that his performance had been exemplary. For family and community, his interactions with the, with families in the community, three of us identified that skill level as proficient, and four of us identified that skill level as exemplary. And under professional culture, three of us had identified proficiency in the superintendent's performance. Four of us felt that his performance had been exemplary in creating a professional culture in the district. Again, the overall evaluation was straight across the board proficient. And congratulations on that. Let's see what we've got here. So again, not all of these numbers are going to add up to seven. Sometimes they do. For the student learning goal, that was by 2020, we will increase supports that improve student achievement for all students while closing existing achievement gaps for economically disadvantaged students and students with learning disabilities. Four of us felt significant progress. Three of us felt that he had met those goals. The district had. Professional practice goal was by 2020, we will increase our instructional leadership expertise and capacity within the district to support teachers in meeting the needs of all learners. One with significant progress, four felt that he had met, and two felt he had exceeded the expectations. The district improvement goals, there were two of them. One was professional learning communities. And by, by 2020, we will increase the ability of grade level and content-specific professional learning communities to use student-friendly, teacher-friendly data cycles. One felt there'd been some progress. Two felt significant progress. Four were proficient. And district improvement goal two, a guaranteed and viable curriculum by June 2020. We will have a system to provide a comprehensive, rigorous, equitable, and relevant curriculum that is aligned to Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Some progress. One school committee member felt there'd been some progress. Five felt there'd been significant progress. One felt that he had met that. And again, that, that's sort of the overall, the overarching tabulations. You can drill down more specifically for those who are interested when this gets posted tomorrow. For the comments, I'm not going to read out 13 pages of comments. But if people have comments that they would like to make or like to share, either comments that they had made or additional comments for the superintendent, now's your time. So if anybody has any, any thoughts they want to share with the superintendent, again, either based on their own comments or, or in the moment, please feel free to do so.
I'll start. As we were talking about in executive session, Sean, that we're not thrilled with this doc, this tool. It's, it's complex. It's difficult in some things. We don't have some of the data to drill down. But all that being said, we appreciated the fact that the DSE this year modified the assessment, so, you know, really focusing on key areas that we think are important for our district. I would like to say that I have been incredibly impressed with the year and a half that you've been here and the fact that, oh, actually, it's more than that now. We're closing in on your last year of your three-year contract, last six months. The fact that you entered our district and quickly began to really recognize and assess the things that were needed in our community. You saw the weaknesses in our curriculum, and, you know, you, and our, our way of teaching brought in Billy Donegal. You brought in essential partners. You recognize some of the work that needed to happen in terms of our culture by bringing in Michael Edman, which I think has been a real asset. You have been able to drill down within the budget in terms of management skills, and instead of just starting with the budget where you were the year before and just, you know, adding the things that we asked in terms of start school later, dual credit, and the list goes on. You were able to incorporate those into, you know, the budget that was presented or requested of you. You've built a culture within the schools. I've never known contract negotiations to go as smoothly as they did. Your relationship with your leadership team, the teachers and the students has been exemplary. I'm sorry that things got blown up. You were heading on an amazing track in terms of professional development and the initiatives you have planned for the school. But, you know, you shifted gears very smoothly and, you know, were able to, despite how difficult the spring was for the school district and our community, you still were able to get us through to the other end and then recognized, you know, that this pandemic wasn't going anywhere and that there was significant work that needed to happen to improve our remote learning, to build a better hybrid model, to increase safety. And as you can see, where we are as a school district, many of the school districts across the state are remote. And you worked very hard to set up a hybrid model that we are now able to continue supporting because of the safety parameters that you've put in place. You know how to reach out and get the resources you need. You're very creative that way. And your relationship building that you've done with community members, I think, has been incredible. I could go on, but there are six other people who are part of this committee who I'm sure would like to add their sort of comments regarding the evaluation. It's been an absolute pleasure and an honor working with you, and I think that you have come in at the right time for our school district, and I am very, very pleased to support your contract and your evaluation. Thank you.
I'm sure that Sean is glad that this is being recorded.
Yeah.
Any else have feedback?
I would like to read one of my comments that I made. Superintendent Gallagher continues to make headway in changing the culture of Newburyport School District in spite of the pandemic we are facing. His positive, steady leadership has established a culture of trust where educators feel valued and supported. This is the foundation for innovation, and I expect we will continue to see positive growth over the next few years. I think we're in the midst of a major cultural shift, and I attribute that to Sean's work. I, I just think he's done an incredible job building this culture of trust where teachers can do their best and they're not afraid to do that. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheil.
Other feedback for Sean?
I'll go. Is that okay? Yeah, I'd like to echo, you know, a lot of the things that have already been said. You know, I think when we went through the superintendent search process, I, I think a lot of times, you know, what you see in the interview is not always what you get, but I think in Sean's case, it absolutely was. I think he was able to jump right in, you know, really, you know, evaluate, you know, where our, our needs were and then how to, you know, put a plan in motion on how to move us forward. You know, what the mayor mentioned about, you know, just even looking at the budget a different way. I think zero, you know, zero-based budgeting that he brought in, you know, really looking at it with a fresh eye, seeing areas that we can improve, I think he's been very adept at that. We've started out here. You know, I have a lot of relationships with him, you know, he stands up for them, he's there for them. You know, I always hear when he's in the classrooms, because my, my kids tell me, and I've got three kids in three buildings, and they tell me they see him all the time, which is, is great to hear too. Plus, I'm also someone who works in districts all over the state, and I got to tell you from time and time again, these last couple of years, that we've been ahead of the curve in a lot of these things, and I think that's because of Sean's leadership, so. Keep up the good work. I think you're also smart enough to realize that we can always do better, and I appreciate that, you too, that you're always looking at, at your own performance and seeing how you can improve upon it and how we can, you know, make your report the best district around, so, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Redd.
I'd like to add, I'd like to add to kind of some things that Sean just said. And just as you did, Sean, when you first visited the district, you have walked the talk to include modeling and understanding the importance of relationships at all levels, as well as the understanding of various educational programs and what composes them. I often think of a comment you made when you first interviewed, you talked about having to teach, when you were a teacher, you had to teach algebra. Was it Algebra I?
Right, yeah.
And it wasn't exactly something you were looking forward to. But you, you did what you needed to get through and do a good job. And I think that, I'm not saying that's the basis for all your hard work, but it, it, it just, to me, you know, this whole pandemic situation is a huge challenge, and I, I just, I, I can't, well, I guess I appreciate in some situations, but I can't fully appreciate what you have to do every day when you kind of wake up and gear up to what you deal with. And I'll echo what everyone else has said, you've done a great job, and we're very glad to have you leading our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Any additional comments for the superintendent?
Sure, I don't want to have to repeat the accolades that people have already given you. I do just want to point out a couple of things that I always really appreciate. Number one is something that Sean alluded to, which is the humility that comes along with always recognizing that as good as things are, and as better as things have gotten, that there's still going to be room to improve. So it's all just steps along the way. And I also, I'm going to pinpoint a decision at the beginning of this pandemic, which was that that very first Friday to keep the students out of school and give the staff a day to wrap their heads around what was coming. It seems more prescient now even than it did then, but, uh, but that was, that was huge, and that's the kind of, I would say gutsy decision that, you know, a lot of people thought we might be back in school in two weeks. You're like, ah.
Can everyone hear Dave or?
No, I can't hear Dave, we can't hear you. Dave, if you can.
Something happened?
Yeah, yeah, we couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
We can hear you now.
Yeah, I was just saying, my sound must have cut out. I was just saying that I appreciate the humility, and I appreciate the vision, and I look forward to what's coming next.
Thank you, Mr. Hockeiser.
I'll go. All right. My main thing is always parent advocate, I guess I consider myself for the school committee, so. And I think a lot of the public may consider me the same. The main thing is Sean's total openness, communication is almost shocking. As I wrote in my thing, I will always get a totally forthright, open, honest answer and a phone call within, you know, hours, which is amazing considering how busy he is all the time. And I think it's really important that the public knows that, like, the top boss is down there in the trenches with everybody else, you know, like Sean Riordan said. Always in the schools, my kids see him, they always laugh about it, you know, the accent's funny, you know, he's a great communicator with the kids. I think that really goes a long, long way, you know, the, the curriculum and all the other, you know, high-level school stuff, of, of course, is very important, but you can't underestimate the way that people communicate with the public. And I think Sean does an excellent job with it, and I appreciate it very much, so thank you.
And I have a few comments as well. I, as being, having worked with Sean as, as the vice chair of the school committee, we have a lot of contact, and very often, I will start by, by saying, Sean, did you see that email from the parent that was concerned about this? And his response is almost universally the same. Yeah, yeah, I'm going to give them a call this afternoon, or yeah, I've already called them. And not only is that sort of a very significant change in the culture of Central Office, that is a change in the culture of the entire district, because Sean has been insistent that his principles move to that modality. You don't just swap emails back and forth, that you pick up the phone and talk to somebody. That has had a huge, a huge impact in people's level of trust. You know, I, I have always admired Sean's ability to see problems as, as issues in terms, looking for solutions, that no matter what the crisis is, no matter what the issue is, it is a problem to be solved and to be solved collaboratively. I've, I've sat in on two contract negotiations with the teachers while Sean has been here, and both of them were characterized by collaboration. They were characterized by trust. They, and they were characterized by innovation. You know, when, when we had struggled to create a leadership model for teachers, and in fact, really were missing that for three years, Sean sat down and his response was to meet with teachers and say, what should it look like? What do you think it should look like? What, what, what would best serve the teachers in your school in terms of having teacher leadership? And designed a program that has been, I think, amazingly helpful during the pandemic. We had no idea how important it was going to be, but it, it has just made a huge, huge difference. You have always been student-focused, and that, that really, in all of our conversations, and in much of what you have to say at the school committee, it's about what's best for the kids. And I think the community sees that, and I think the community trusts that. I certainly have learned to trust that. I'm excited that up, just on the horizon, is, it's a new strategic plan that we're going to be doing. And I think that is going in, in much the same way that you came in, dusted off the strategic plan, took it off the shelf, and began to tie our goals to what we had already said we wanted to do. I look forward to your participation in that, in that process going forward. And, and I will also, I will also echo the mayor. One of the things that I don't think you get credit for is your, I, it is a matter of public record that I have been violently and colorfully opposed to zero-based budgeting. I had many conversations with Brenda Refit and a number of other people 15 years ago about zero-based budgeting. I am reevaluating my thinking on that since you have come to the district, because I have seen you every year take a look at the programs that we have budgeted, really work with your staff to assess whether they're being effective, and then restructuring the ones that haven't been effective so that they can be more effective, before we even automatically just add another layer on top of that budget-wise and add another layer on top of that. That your ability to really take a look at our budget and, and really discern whether it's meeting the needs of our students, and if it isn't, your willingness to innovate and make change, I think, I just haven't seen that in my 20 years here. So, and I don't think you get enough credit for, for that, you know, in the community. It's kind of like a, sort of a hidden skill, but it has, it has resulted in consistently improving things for students, and whether that's students with special needs or that's students who need to come into school later and what, you know, let's make that happen. So you always seem to be willing to solve problems. You're, you're very good-natured, and, and I think people really enjoy seeing you in the schools. I probably, for every time that I have dropped by the central office to talk with you and found you in your office, I have also found you not in your office with your, with your staff saying, well, I think he went over to the knock, or I think he's at the Brezner hand. You might want to let them know where you're going, Sean. But it has been, it has been really an enriching experience for me to be able to work with you, and I, I, I see the, I see the work ahead of us, and I see you ready to do that. I have no doubts about your ability to guide this district in very profound. That is my feedback. Anything you want to say, Sean?
Yeah, I would, I, well, first of all, I just, just really overwhelmed with the comments and, and truly appreciate, you know, all of, all of what you said about me and my leadership, but I really have to give credit to the entire district. You know, from day one, I think when, when I was appointed superintendent here, within a short time, I recognized how special this district was. I recognized how talented our faculty and support staff was. I recognized how talented our principals were. And I think the, the entry plan just really, I think emphasized all of those great qualities of the Newburyport school system. And I think for my entire career as, as an administrator, and I, and I've said this even as a teacher back, you know, a long time ago in, in the early 90s when I started teaching, I recognized that educating students is something that can't be done in isolation. It takes an entire community. You know, from, from the teachers can't do it themselves, the parents can't do it themselves, the principals can't do it themselves, superintendents can't do it themselves, super community members. And I think I've really taken that collaborative leadership throughout my career. And I'll tell you, in Newburyport, I think the talent of the staff, I think the community itself, the parents and the guardians and our NEF supports and the community sports from the Human Rights Commission, I just think have been such a great resource for me as a superintendent. And I think my goal was to, to really bring everybody together, this wonderful community. And if we could get everyone moving in the same direction, great things can happen. And, and I think with that, all of the wonderful things that we accomplished together, you know, from our late start to the skills-based instruction. I really believe, Mr. Menon, you are 100% right. The void, I think, was our teacher leadership and bringing our teacher leadership on board and having, expanding our leadership capacity at the teacher level has been a great asset, especially now during the pandemic. You know, we achieved a lot, you know, we, the dual enrollment programs that we've been enhancing. And I'm really pleased on the student leadership programming that we've done over the past two and a half years, where giving our students a seat at the table and allowing them to really help us enhance our school culture, I think, has been such a great asset. And having the student voice and working on restorative justice practices has been tremendous. And, you know, Central Office, when we're talking about budgeting and we're talking about management, the Central Office team has just been amazing, you know, Nancy Lysick, Assistant Superintendent Beck, you know, Nancy Koch, you know, I just can't say enough. I, from when I was fortunate to become the superintendent here, and I think one of the questions from the committee was, it will, if we, if we appoint you as superintendent, how long are you going to stay here? And I think my answer was, as long as you guys want me, so. I think this is a, is a great, great start, and, and I'm excited for the extension. And I agree 100% with school community members, Redd and Hockeiser. We've accomplished a lot, I think, in a short time. But we're going to continue to work hard, you know, even, even in success, and, and when you're doing well, there's always things you can improve on. And, and I think we have the foundation over the past two and a half years to bring the district even further, and I'm going to continue what I've always have done, and that's, you know, just working, you know, with all of the stakeholders and being a piece of this. And, and I think I come in, my last, you know, philosophy is, I think we all, all of our jobs in the organization are as important. We all have different jobs, you know, from superintendent is a different job, and school committee is a different job, and cafeteria workers and custodians. But in the organization, we are all valuable. You know, there isn't one member of our school community that's working here in the system that, you know, is not less or more because of a job title. We all have our jobs, and, and we're just going to keep working together. And as our goal as a superintendent is to stay focused, and I think we are going to accomplish a lot in the next few years. And, and, you know, as, as we said, be, be the best of the best. That's, that's our ultimate goal down the, down the road. And, and I just truly appreciate your support. I've just really taken back by all those comments, so. I just can't thank you all enough, and for the people listening and our teachers and administrators. I love working here, I love this team, I love this community. And I love to know that I'm going to be here for another, you know, three years, and, and I'm excited. I don't want to go anywhere, and this is where I want to be, and we're just going to keep working hard and, and getting better every day. Well, thank you.
And that would, that would be, you're going to be here for at least the next three and a half years.
Okay.
You got that.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. We closed the, this portion of, of the meeting in which we've shared the evaluation with the public. Again, these documents should go up online tomorrow and will be available to the entire community. The superintendent is the only person in, in the school district, and maybe, actually, I think the only city employee whose evaluation is done publicly and then posted publicly. And that is the state stat, by state statute. So, so these will be available for the entire community to look at, Sean. The next two items have to do with your contract. The first, the first item is your, normally, under normal circumstances, we would have evaluated you in the spring and made a recommendation about a salary increase at that time. We were busy and didn't, didn't think that that was the best time to do that. So we have to still, I think, deal with that. Your contract rolled over on July 1. rolled over on July 1st. Your salary stayed the same, and we have, we've had some discussion as a school committee about what our recommendation is. And the school committee itself needs to vote publicly to approve this. In your contract that you're finishing up right now, we had written into that contract the opportunity, the possibility of giving you an increase of up to 3%. It is, it has been the recommendation of the school committee to meet that level, to give you a 3% raise retro to the July 1st. And the school committee needs to now publicly take a vote to do that. I would ask for a motion to, to do that.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sheila. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's a thundering silence. Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you.
The second, the second item, I will turn over to the mayor, as I did in executive session, and that is to discuss your contract that will begin July 1st, 2021. The mayor and I spoke with you about that, and we have shared this with the school committee. I will ask the mayor, your, your requests were modest, I think, I believe, and, and the school committee is supportive of them. I would ask the mayor to just share with the community the few changes that are being made in the contract you currently have as it, as it rolls over to a three-year contract.
Thank you, Mr. Menon. Happy to do so. So the contract will roll over on July 1st and will be a three-year contract that will run through 2024. In the compensation in that timeframe would be a three, a recommended voted each year, a 3% raise, as we just did for this past year, would be up to a 3% raise each year of the contract. We also honored your ask that your outside district travel for $4,000. You asked that that be changed because you're doing much more local travel, so that we did make that adjustment and for your in-travel allocation, and that your expense would be $200 per month. So we're essentially just moving some money out of one account area of the contract into another. The last, then there was a request that you buy back some of your vacation time. Originally, we were, in your contract, we allowed you to buy back seven vacation days. But since this is, one of our concerns, Sean, is that you're not taking enough vacation time. And that I know it's hard right now, and that you're working probably 14 to 16 hours a day, and probably some days even more than that with everything you've been, has been thrown your way with the pandemic. But we have honored your request to increase that to 10 days. But we really would like to see you trying to use some vacation time because it's important for your overall health, your time with your family, your time away from the school district. Look at, look who's talking, right? But, but no, it's important. And that was a conversation that we all had within the executive session, that we would really like to see you take time off because you earn it, you deserve it, and you should. So that's essentially where we are. We've honored your modest requests, and I recommend that we publicly approve this new contract.
Take that as a motion.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Very much. Any discussion? Take some vacation time, Sean.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Congratulations, Sean. I am glad you're going to be here for at least three and a half more years.
Thank you all so much. Can't be, can't be happier right now. So I appreciate all your support, and I'm looking forward to some great things to come.
Well, I hate to, I hate to sort of...
That make...
Sean, go ahead, Mr. Redden.
I just wanted to make one comment. It's just, I just have a unique perspective. So, you know, one of the, the other finalist for our school committee, and I don't think I've shared this in public, I know I've talked about it with Sean, but the other finalist, Anthony Colanino, I ended up working with after he didn't get the job here in Newburyport. He came to work for the company I was working for, and he's now doing more professional development and keynote activities all around the country around my growth mindset. But I had this conversation with him, and I absolutely think that both of you, Sean and Anthony, are where they're supposed to be. It absolutely worked out the way it was supposed to be. And again, I do feel we're very fortunate that, you know, we have you here in Newburyport.
Thank you.
Well, the next item on our agenda, I'm going to turn over to the superintendent. I hope it doesn't rain on your parade here, but we're going to go over, we're going to review the calendar that we voted on in the spring or late or early fall, and are going to take a look at what your recommendations are for the last six months.
And what I'll do is I'll share my screen. I just did some talking points for everybody. So hopefully, we can...
Everybody did get a copy of the, the calendar in their packet. So it might help just to have that handy.
Right.
So that you can follow along.
Let me just, can you all see that?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great. So I think for the, for this, just for some talking points, I think there's three areas of the calendar that we'd like just to have a discussion and possibly a vote on. So school cancellation procedures due to the, you know, inclement weather of snowstorms, I'd like to talk about in the next few slides. Also, some December date options when we're looking at the December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and then some Semester Two Professional Development Day options that I'd like to share with everyone. So as you know, with the DESC, and most districts move to a full remote learning model. So for us, we know we have the capabilities of doing that. So the idea of this, and the commissioner approved for this year only, and we'll see what happens for next year. But when school is canceled due to a snowstorm, give the opportunity for us would be a full remote day, so the students wouldn't lose any instructional time. With that, and if we utilize this option, then there won't be, as we all know, those five snow days at the end of the calendar, would be able to cancel school if the roads aren't safe enough for the hybrid model, and then we can go full remote. And then we won't have to make up time in June and add, add days on. So, you know, my recommendation, there are other districts that have already moved to do this, but our school committee date fell on this day to kind of have a conversation on it. So my recommendation would do approve this. And then once it approved, if we can get the approval for that, then I'll work with our principals, and we'll develop the building principals and administration a protocol for the snow days. They were planning on a hybrid, for example, model, learning plan, and all of a sudden, we know a snowstorm's coming in, we'll have those remote learning days ready to go for both cohorts, Cohort A and Cohort B.
As you go over each of these items, can people jump in with questions?
Sure.
Okay. I, I had one. Are there any contractual implications for district staff for not having snow days or, or having snow days, or would that be developed as part of the protocols?
No, I think it would be part of the protocols. I have spoke with the union regarding this, and, and they're in favor of it. So I don't, because it would be a regular full day, you know, teaching, and we would follow our regular remote learning. It would count as a day for the teachers and also a day for the students.
And, and we normally have maintenance staff in the buildings anyway on snow days?
Correct. So we would still follow our procedures that we do in the schools, but cleaning the parking lots, the sidewalk throughout the day. But we just wouldn't have the hybrid model of the students coming in or staff coming in. They would probably be working from home that day.
Great.
I had a question. I think Bruce just kind of asked the same thing. But, so Sean, are you saying that you're having internal discussions right now, what that day would look like, or is the plan to have some sort of, you know, like, let's say, our Wednesday right now? Like, have that be the model?
Yeah, yeah. Sean, Mr. Redden, you're kind of breaking up, but what, what we'll do...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back and work with the building principals, and so that by bringing both cohorts in for the remote learning, it will similar, it would look similar to the Wednesday, but it may include a little more time. So we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Yep. What would the, what would the contingency be if you had a massive power failure for like a few days? Because we did have one of those, I think it was about three years ago in late October, early November in the area. And I'm not, you know, I'm not wishing that, but what would the contingency be if you had a, you know, sustained power outage? Because I know that's going to affect, impact people's ability to get online and do the learning.
Correct. So, so for that, we would cancel, it would probably be like a regular cancellation if we didn't have the capabilities of getting online because of a power outage or a state snow emergency, then we would probably have to make up those days because we wouldn't have the capabilities of, of being remote.
So that would be something that's determined according to the, the situation, you know, act of God or whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Sean, we can, if, if you are looking for us to move this, we can move this and have the discussion and take a vote if you, if you need that.
Yeah, because then that will set, you know, then we'll be able to work out the details on what those remote days would look like if, if we, like, if we had the capabilities and we didn't have the major power outages, you know, but then we can go back and work with the building principals.
So would somebody make a motion that...
I move to allow us to use our snow days as remote learning opportunity for all students as opposed to using it as traditional snow days where school is canceled.
Second.
Do we have discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Check that one off your list.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next discussion, looking at the December date options. So, and this is from our medical advisory team from last week. So right now, we're currently scheduled for hybrid learning for Cohort A on Monday, December 21st, Tuesday, December 22nd. And as we all know, an early release on Wednesday. So that's the full remote day, Wednesday. Working with the medical advisory team, and then obviously, we're going to be talking about the increase with COVID cases all around us. And I'm sure the mayor, when we get to that portion, the school committee can fill in with the city. The recommendation that would work, I think, on a safe, you know, a safety protocol, would be for us to utilize December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd as remote for both Cohort A and Cohort B students. And from talking to Mike Gallagher and Dr. Sue and the Board of Health, they think that that would be a good strategy since it's already kind of a half of a week there. And so we would try to maintain, if, you know, the data continues to support keeping the schools open, the data, I mean, is making sure we have the staffing capabilities for the next two weeks, and then go full remote on December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And I think that does two things for the district. It provides us some safety and we're precaution because we know that the Thanksgiving trends data is probably going to increase. And then the other piece, we were talking about holiday parties and family gatherings even before, you know, the, the winter break. So this would be beneficial. And then on the flip side, talking with some parents in Cohort B, this would give both Cohort A and B access on these three days with their teachers before the winter break. So that would be our, you know, our recommendation at this time is just look at that December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd to go full remote for both Cohorts A and B.
Are you looking for a vote on Sean on that?
I think we would need a vote on this, mayor, so we can get the word out to the families.
Motion to approve the recommendation by Superintendent Gallagher to go to full remote days for both Cohorts A and B, December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd.
Second, the second, Ms. Balding. Discussion?
I've just got a question. How does that work, Sean? And so the Monday, the 21st, right?
Yes.
How are they going to do, is the one, I don't know, say, algebra, whatever, they're going to, the staff going to be able to handle dealing with twice the amount of kids? Is that how it's going to work?
Yes, because they would have the, it'd be similar to their Wednesdays, because right now they have both cohorts in on the Wednesday. So we would have both cohorts on those three days, so it would be their full classes. And then what, as, as we'll do with the snow days, is after tonight's meeting, we'll work with the principals, the building principals in each school and develop what that schedule is going to look like, and then we can get that out to parents sooner than later.
Okay.
Sean, I don't want you, I don't want to put you in a position of speaking for the teachers, but you've had some conversations with, with teachers and principals about this, and can you characterize their reaction to it?
Yes, I think right now where the teachers and principals would be in favor of this, just in working, remember, each week, we're working with our medical advisory team. And I mean, I think all of us are very concerned with the cases that are rising, and we feel this, this action that we would take would be helpful, you know, for not bringing the students in during that half of a week. And then, as we said, you know, the, the other piece is having both cohorts together before the winter break, I think, is an advantage for the instructional piece.
Any additional questions?
Yeah. I guess, you know, the first thing is just a couple of community comments. I think people were actually hoping Cohort B people were actually hoping to get those live days for them, being that they lost some live days over Thanksgiving break. So, you know, equity is what it is. I don't need to disrupt anything else. I just wanted to bring that up. It is something that we had talked about when we first put together the, the A cohort, B cohort thing. I forget who it is, but somebody definitely brought that up, and we said we'd look into that. I also know that, you know, we wouldn't be the first community to have the discussion of, you know, our schools are going to be closed extra days, but our town is going to be open. And right now, there's more transmission going on in town, restaurants, parks, boardwalks, and that sort of thing than there is in school. And so I, I don't really know how to, how to talk to that if people were to ask.
That's a good point. If I can interject, I mean, I, I do agree with the, you know, keep everybody out that week, and then since they're out the rest of the week, in theory, you know, they're not all together when, once people have been with their families, presuming, excuse me, presumably. But we do keep saying, Sean, how it's, you know, the kids are basically safer in the building, right? So it's kind of, we're saying it, how am I trying to say this? it's kind of, we're saying it, how am I trying to say this? There's a great feeling to be in the building except for this one three day period. But is that because, you know, going back to the, the one parent who emailed today and others that have spoken about it, you know, the, the B kids missed out on the Thanksgiving idea that we were going to try and split the Monday, Tuesday. And now we can't do that. But I thought that they were doing a great job of keeping everybody, doing the cleaning, the overnights that would be able to have the cohorts in one day and then the next. Is that not the case?
Yeah, I think, you know, from working with like Dr. Sue and Mike Gallard, the, I think the Thanksgiving Day spike that we're, you know, we're already starting to see the rise, but they're really anticipating cases to be extraordinary, you know, from our meeting. And I'm hoping for this week and next week, we can maintain the hybrid model, but they're really because of the, the family gatherings, I think over the Thanksgiving Day break, and with the anticipation of the winter holiday gatherings that will be starting soon. They really were strongly in favor of, you know, starting this winter break earlier and not bringing kids in on that short week. The medical team felt it would be an advantage for us.
I guess that's my question. If, if it's, they're supposed to be safer in school because they're following all the rules while they're there, doesn't, and I don't want to kind of be, you know, devil's advocate here, but doesn't it stand to reason they're going to not going to be in the school? And then, well, I guess now saying this out loud, they're still going to be in their homes for most of the day. So it's not going to change.
They're going to be scheduled, correct. They're not, they're not off. They're going to be.
Yeah. Okay. So ignore most of what I just said. I'm sorry. Said to talk it out loud. But Dave, you know, you know what I mean? Like they're, they're still, it's no different than the regular week because they would have been in school till two o'clock and then out doing whatever they may be doing regardless, right?
I understand that, but we, we're saying there is something different than the regular week because we're saying that they should stay home. But we're not saying that about the rest of the community.
Uh, right.
The, the only additional, you know, as a city, and the city is not our purview here, but as a city, the only thing, at least that I know of now that we're changing is whether or not the kids are in school. And that is not where we're seeing the transmission come from. And so that's kind of been the national argument. Like, why are we closing schools if schools are the places that we're not seeing transmission come from? We can't close family gatherings. I understand that. It just, and I'm not the health expert and I'm not the epidemiologist, so I don't intend to answer that. I just want to leave that question there.
Yep. And I think, I, I mean, that, that, this would be my recommendation on our December 21st meeting. We could bring back our medical team to kind of talk through some of these questions. As Mr. Hockeys has said, it's probably better for them to answer some of those questions that the community may have regarding being in school or not being in school. We're not looking for, you know, we're just looking for these three days that is really kind of a broken up week to go to do the full remote.
Are we ready to take a vote on this? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed? And looks like you have this to be able to begin to work on.
Great. Thank you very much. And I think it would probably be great to hear from, I, I would like, I don't make the school committee agenda, but I would recommend that we, the December 21st, we'll see if we can get Dr. Sue, Mike Gallard, and some of the medical professionals to kind of talk us through the, the numbers that we're going to be seeing in the next week or so. So.
Yeah. And I, I think you're, you're going to have new data every day. And I think that's going to drive a lot of things. You know, and, you know, at some point, I don't know if the state's going to come up with this, but I think at some point, we just really, you know, we may need to, or the state may need to mandate something related to children and students in schools getting tested more. You know, just to find out if there are any, you know, infectious students or children that we're, that, that are being missed. And I just think that may be something to anticipate. And then the only other calendar thing I had to add was this whole thing about having a vaccine day, which I think from practicality standpoint makes a lot of sense. And it may be something to just keep in the back of our minds as we proceed into the spring.
I haven't heard that. What is a vaccine day?
It's, it's a, it's basically a tentative proposal, you know, from the Secretary of State that just like voting day, when the vaccine becomes available, everything is essentially focused on delivering doses of vaccine to as many people as possible.
Okay.
Be like a voting day, but with getting a shot.
That sounds less fun, Steve.
Yeah, I know.
I've always found a lot of similarities between getting a shot and voting some years. All right, Sean, you have your, you have some feedback from the school committee on that. And I guess the third topic that you wanted to go over?
Yes, is, that's on the next slide. So looking at the calendar for semester two. If you recall, our professional development days, I think in the beginning of the year, and then we took a lot of the professional development opportunities off was really focused on safety protocols, restructuring, you know, the school day, working with the students. So for the second half of the year, what we would like to do is maintain some of our professional learning. Because obviously it's very, very important, the professional development, but also the collaboration around instruction, curriculum instruction and assessment. So the proposal would be looking at all the Friday dates. And the first one is the Friday, January 15th. It's a full professional day. So as, right now, as part of our hybrid model, the students are already remote. So that would not impact Cohort B. If we move that day to the Wednesday, January 13th. And that would be a full, it would be really the first time since September that we'd have a full day of professional development with the entire staff. And there's a lot of, I think, things that we would like to work on together, especially around curriculum instruction and assessment and some other professional development opportunities. I'll go through this list and then Mr. Menon, maybe we take comments right after. The second piece is taking the Friday. It's the same thing, the February 12th date. And then move that to Wednesday, February 10th, and early release day. So the students for that Cohort A and B would be together on the Wednesday. And they would get out, they're already getting out early, but would probably, you know, move that up a little bit for the time. Friday, March 19th, same thing, move that to the Wednesday, which is already a full remote, no impact on Cohort B. And then April 2nd, we would push that forward to the April 14th, which is that Wednesday. We would cancel the PD early release in May. And we're going to talk about the MCAS testing, but we had a plan that we worked on for three weeks for the MCAS testing for the junior class to be administered in January, but that, the commissioner released a memo today that is canceling those MCAS, and they're pushing the junior testing to May. So especially for the high school, they're going to be giving two tests, obviously in April, which is the LA, and then May, which is the rest of the district. So the rest of the district is scheduled for MCAS. So we felt we would take, you know, not utilize that early release. And then the last piece is taking the June 4th, the early release day, moving that to June 2nd, no impact once again on Cohort B. And then the staff PD, and then this is also a lot of work that goes on in placements of students from one grade to the next. So really just utilizing some of the PD that we have scheduled and just moving those days to Wednesday from the Fridays and not impacting the Cohort B students. So that would be the changes for the second semester.
Comments?
Sean, it seems that most of these days are already early release days.
Correct.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, Wednesdays are already short days.
Right.
So we're just looking to make a few Wednesdays a little bit shorter?
Well, we'll take a, like, once again, once, we'll work out the details because it's a whole new, you know, from the snow days to what the December day is going to look like. And by moving the early release and what that schedule would look like. I mean, these are the things that I think for the 21st, December 21st, School Committee meeting, we can come back with somewhat details. But if we get the approval now, then I can go back with the team and, and work out what those days are going to look like.
Sean, will these Fridays then become full days?
Yeah, that would be a full day for the hybrid. And if, and if things change, we also have that, I mean, as we said in the reopening plan, the Wednesdays, if the cases go down and, and maybe there's surveillance testing and, and all these things that are in the process, then some of these Wednesdays for Cohort A and B would bring more students in on those days. But for right now, with planning and not having a lot of information in front of us, we would keep these Wednesdays, you know, as the remote days and just move the scheduled PD to these Wednesdays. So it would be a full day on the Fridays now for Cohort B.
Sean, it seems to me that we made a commitment to the community to revisit this in, in December. I feel to me that you are really coming up with, with ways to minimize the impact on, on students, particularly on Cohort B. Is, as, you know, Dave has suggested, creating better equity for the cohort, between the cohorts, certainly. And again, making use of, of what, what we've already have already started. Those days to accommodate these changes you're proposing. So I, I appreciate that. It's, it's, you know, it was an honest commitment that you made. And you're living up to it. The district is living up to it. So I appreciate that. Sean, you would like us to vote on this?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposed changes to the second half of the school year calendar?
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Terrific. Do we have further discussion on this? The only discussion that I would add is the expectation that Sean, you'll be bringing back the work that you and your staff have done to implement these three changes for the meeting of the 21st?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian, did you?
I did. I had one quick thing. If I can, we're all saying ayes. Is that all right?
No, that's okay.
Um, so I know we're doing this because of the pandemic and all the other stuff. I just want to make sure that we all know this is temporary. So when hopefully everything's back to normal for the next school year, when we come to the calendar, we're not thinking about moving half days away from Fridays. That was a long, hard fought battle.
I, I would, yes, and we'll, we'll take our, I think the original schedule that we had for this year. And my favorite discussion is the calendar.
Knew it.
But we'll, we'll take the similar dates that we had for this year. We'll utilize those dates once again for the next school year. So it's, those will be very similar to the original calendar that we proposed this year, that obviously we can't implement because of the pandemic. So.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. All right, Sean, you have, you have some work to do.
Yep. And one, we have this next slide, it goes right into the superintendent's report, but I'll wait for Mr. Menon introduce superintendent's report, I guess.
Our, our longstanding superintendent for, for the district has a superintendent's report. I expect that other people will be filling in some information as well. Mayor may have some as well. So, Sean, let's hear what you got.
The, those are my little arrows, yeah. The, so here's our COVID update and try to simplify a lot of work here. So basically on the left side, you can see the health office statistics. So what, the numbers in red was the data since our last meeting, November 16th. So when we're looking just at the health office statistics, and this is really want to credit Kathy Ricchio and nursing staff, you can see not only all the work that they're doing within the offices themselves, but also on the right side, when we get to the COVID statistics, all the work they're doing, you know, after hours in a lot of cases and with the contact tracing. So for the illness and visits, you know, the total was 695 up until this point. And since November 16th, it's 109. So the non-encounter visits, these are the families and students that are calling into the office and, and could be medical advice. It could be work in the sense of on the telephone or dismissal. You know, really counseling families and students around illness. So there's been 296 of those contacts. Medical administration where we're, you know, the medicines that we're providing daily basis, 365, and it's 71 since then. Treatment of any students coming to the office, been 117. And then absence stays due to illness for the students. Total is 646. And since November 16th, it's been 191.
Sean, those, that's the included, includes that 191, the number? 646 includes the 191?
Correct. Yeah. Oh, it's, it's 646, the, since November 16th. I'm sorry, I separated that out. So that's 191 in addition to the up until the 646 days. So there's been 191 absences since.
Of the 646.
Correct.
So what's that math? Seven carry the one.
So the total would be?
Who's the math guy here? Come on.
Yeah. This is not remote learning right here at its finest.
455.
Sean, do you have any sense of how those statistics on an average year would look at this point in the year?
Well, I think we're, we probably have more, and I just want to credit the families and staff. Because we probably have more students staying home this year as a precaution than coming into the schools. So typically, you know, if a student may have had a cold or not feeling too well, in the old days that, you know, parents may say, hey, you know, you're not, you know, that sick. I want you to go to school. But today, with I think a lot of the reach out that we've done with families. So if students aren't feeling well, they have a headache. You know, it's been great. The parents have been calling the nursing staff and keeping students home. So I think the, the true illness, you know, with the absences obviously have increased because of, I think, just that, you know, we're in a pandemic and it's very precautionary. But on the other side, I, as we said, those non-encounter advice and call-ins have been frequent, which is great, um, because the families are asking, you know, my child has these symptoms, X, Y, Z, uh, what should we do? Uh, so they're reaching out first before sending students in, into the building. Uh, and the same for our staff. Our staff has been calling the nurses, uh, not only for them personally, but for family members at home, because we all know right now household spread and household quarantines are the, is the biggest, um, you know, uh, concern for, for everybody. That's where it's spreading the most is within the home. So. On the, if we go back to the COVID statistics, uh, on the right side, uh, the student dismissal of COVID-19, a possible exposure. Since December, uh, since November 16th has been 30. Uh, student COVID cases, uh, since November 16th, we've had 11. And then staff COVID cases since November 16th has been three. And the majority of these, uh, cases, as we said, since November 16th has been the household spread. Today, I just wanted to show we can start seeing our medical advisory team will be meeting on Wednesday, but just today alone. Uh, stu- students quarantined and this is, um, from potential household spread, um, where we've confirmed there's positive cases in the homes or people are sick and getting tested. Uh, so we had 63 students stay home today. And notified the nurses. And so we're waiting for some household results to come back to us. And then similar with our staff, um, absent today, and this is related COVID-related event, which mean there's 13 staff that may have family members, um, that are getting tested or the staff members aren't feeling well and they're getting tested. So a COVID-related event is really not necessarily a positive test. It's, um, there's a situation going on in the home that they're either awaiting a negative test result or, uh, they were sick and are getting tested. So right now for today, we had, and that's district-wide. So that's not just teachers, that's, uh, employees, uh, today. So we're starting to see what, what we've been talking about is this Thanksgiving Day, um, spike that, that, that's coming. Um, and we're starting to see, I think the increases, um, you know, within our school population, out, outside of school and the, in the, in the home. So I'm sure Mayor Holiday can probably talk about that and kind of what you're seeing in the, in Newburyport the last couple of days.
Uh, thank you, Sean. Yes, we, uh, uh, 17 more cases over the weekend and our numbers are now almost up to 500 in terms of, um, positive cases. We've hired an additional three, uh, nursing staff to help with contract tracing, contact tracing. Uh, cause this has been, as I mentioned it before, uh, it's becomes really difficult. This has been one of the most important things for us in order to keep the schools open and keeping the model working is being able to identify, uh, those who've been in contact and quarantine students. We're trying to tease out a little bit about some of the CDC changes now. Uh, apparently they dropped to 10 days instead of 14, but, um, I'm asking everybody until we have firm, uh, information about that, that you stick to the 14-day quarantine that was established. Um, one of the things that is, um, been significant is that there's been clusters in long-term care facilities. There's just no question about that. Um, not this past week and the weekend before, we had uh, 18 cases in a long-term care facility. So we're working closely with those facilities. We, uh, restricting, uh, visitation, uh, all ancillary services have stopped except for hospice and, uh, end-of-life family visits. Uh, we currently have, um, three police officers positive, have one parks staff positive. Um, and we're just really hoping that we can, you know, continue with what we've been doing, uh, with keeping City Hall, uh, by appointment only, lot more online services and, uh, we're noticing that we're not seeing spread, like for example, in restaurants, even though we've had, uh, seven restaurants that have cases. It's not that the restaurants aren't following. They're actually doing a really good job in terms of protocol. It's what employees do outside of work. And that's where we're finding, for example, you know, we had a server who went to Florida, came back, tested too soon, came to work, got sick and then, you know, the entire restaurant had to be deep cleaned and everyone tested. So, um, you know, our health department is as busy as ever. Um, we're trying to keep up on this. Um, one of the hard parts for us is that the state keeps changing the criteria. You know, at one point we were in red or we were in white, then we went to yellow, then we went to red, then we went back to yellow. So they changed the criteria. Um, but, um, the bottom line is regardless of whether we're, you know, red, pink or, or white, is that cases are surging. There is no question about it. We've started back doing our weekly calls with, uh, or every other week with the hospital in terms of where they are. I think the one positive piece of information is the fact that, um, people tend to be going to seek medical care sooner. And people are not getting as sick as, um, they did when the surge first hit in the spring, where we would have people 45, 60-day hospitalizations, um, people in ICU on vents. We're not seeing that. We're seeing that people aren't quite as sick as they had been and hospital stays are half that, 15, 20, 15 to 20 days. So that's encouraging also. But, um, the bottom line is that we still don't know how this virus will impact the individual person and that it's absolutely critical that people continue to wear masks, wash their hands, sanitize, socially distance and, uh, you know, they've been doing really well in the schools and, uh, unfortunately we're, I'm getting very concerned about what's happening in the community, but we just can, you know, keep being role models and try to, uh, you know, get this, uh, the numbers going in the other direction instead of up. But we have, uh, been accepted into the vaccine distribution system and our health, I was working, uh, with this form from our, uh, that came from the state today to our health director. So they're working on that. It has to be submitted by the end of the week. Uh, the other piece that we're working on is that we're almost out of our CARES mon- money. That was the money that came to the schools and the state to help to support all the, uh, COVID activities that, you know, PPEs, you know, remote, uh, laptops, et cetera. And, uh, that money has to be spent by December 31st. And we're hoping that, because we still know that we're going to need to pay teachers, uh, to teach remote. So we're encouraged by the conversations that are happening in Washington and hopefully we'll see another round of, uh, uh, funding to help states and our community in particular, uh, over the next couple of weeks. So um, that's a quick update where we are. Um, you can read or watch the, uh, more detailed update, uh, my PSA Thursday afternoon that I did on the hub, or you can read, uh, the actual, uh, speech on the city website. Um, but Sean and I stay in close contact about cases that are happening in the schools as well as those that are happening in the community.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Can you just confirm, I just, and I don't want to seem like I'm contradicting you, but, but December 1st one, or December 3rd, rather, showed us at 368. So we had that many since last Thursday? We went up 132 cases in the city?
That, that data probably was wrong at that time, again, because of the changes that they were making to the system. They weren't counting rapid tests because they're not reliable and probables were not being included and now they're included. So, I mean, it's just, it's, I know it's, um, a bit challenging to stay on top of all the data, but right now as of today, we have 496, uh, cases year to date.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, that's off by a lot.
I know, I know.
And, and I would just reiterate with, with the mayor, with, uh, changing of the metrics, um, you know, throughout. And, and I think that's what we're kind of used to during, uh, planning for this pandemic is that everything changes, recommendations change. So we adjust to that. Um, but we went from a red community with the new metrics to a yellow community. And for our, for our listeners and our families, uh, working with our medical advisory team, we analyze all of that. So I think our surrounding communities around us, um, they're still in, in yellow with a sub, uh, 5% or lower, um, positivity rate. So we do anticipate, uh, our meeting on Wednesday with this Thanksgiving Day bump for those cases to rise. Um, and I think Ms. Hall in her public comment was a 100% right in the sense of we analyze all of this data that's going around us. Um, but right now we haven't had the spread occurring in the schools, um, which is awesome, uh, for us. And I'm just really proud of the planning that went into the protocols. But eventually, if the cases are rising and there's that family household, uh, spread and people are quarantining, uh, because they're awaiting a test, eventually you're not going to have enough staff to maintain the hybrid model. So um, for us is we analyze, uh, a lot of the metrics. We have people that are on the ground, uh, that deal with COVID, uh, on a daily basis as part of our medical team that are advising us. Um, but if we can maintain our staffing and, um, and, and we're not seeing the spread in schools and it's not having a, a major impact on the staffing patterns, then we're going to try to stay, you know, with the medical advice as long as we can in, in the hybrid model. Um, and that's why I think this week and next week is, is really going to be telling on how this Thanksgiving Day bump, um, that they're talking about is going to impact us. So, but in preparation, I think, um, we can pivot, uh, if we have to in a, in a short time. And, and I think that's a credit to the building administrators and the teachers, uh, with all their, um, professional development that, you know, if all of a sudden Wednesday, the, the cases, uh, uh, through the roof and, and the mayor and the city and the department, the board of health says we need to make a, make a change in the learning, uh, model, then we have the ability to do that. But, but for us and with school committee approval, um, we're really looking, if we can get this week and next weekend, uh, I, I would be really, uh, pleased with that, considering what we're hearing on, uh, on this Thanksgiving Day bump.
Thank you. There are additional, uh, you have additional stuff in your report?
No, I'm, I'm gonna, I do have, uh, just some talking points. So I'll go back to the, I'll stop screen sharing regarding COVID. I think I'm all set if there's any other questions.
Yeah, you were going to talk to us about MCAS now?
Well, the, the good news is this is the quickest MCAS update because we received, uh, memo from the commissioner that for the juniors, um, they've postponed that test until the spring. So all the planning we did for three weeks for the January test, uh, for the junior class is, uh, null and void and we'll have to do more planning. And get more guidance from the state. Um, he did schedule a superintendent. We got, uh, late this afternoon. We have a superintendent's conference call with the commissioner on the ninth uh, this week. So, um, I'm sure we'll be talking about only for MCAS and then also um, the approval of winter sports. So I'm, I'm sure we'll get, uh, some updates there uh, regarding that. So, um, I do have some updates for the winter sports. So winter sport practices, um, were going to start on December 14th as of right now, unless something changes. Um, that's the winter sport practice date. Um, the sports that got moved to fall season two, as you recall, it was football and volleyball and those, uh, seasons will begin on the 28th. They also moved those, uh, winter, uh, indoor track was moved to that, uh, fall season two, uh, on February 28th. So there will be no winter track starting on December 14th. The, um, sports that will begin or that were approved were both boys and girls basketball, boys and girls ice hockey, uh, boys and girls swimming and the skiing, uh, ski teams. Um, part of some of the regulations is there is no, uh, scrimmages allowed. Uh, locker rooms, uh, are not to be utilized. And, uh, all safety and health protocols will be followed. And that includes wearing masks at all times in practice and in games. For the KPN league, they've only scheduled, uh, to 10-game season. And it's just in game, in, um, 10 teams, uh, within the league. So there's no out of league games. Uh, and the first game is scheduled at this time to begin in January. And then the season will conclude, uh, before February vacation. As part of the requirements, there is no, uh, fans or spectators. You know, we did some pre-planning for athletics. As you know, uh, many of our games would be live streamed with a camera system. Uh, that was set up, uh, in the field house or actually the gym. Field house in my days. Um, so that is, uh, what has been proposed for winter sports. It was approved by the, the medical, uh, the state's medical team, uh, about a month ago and the MIA approved, um, the winter sports. But as I said, we have a commissioners meeting on December 9th. I'm not sure what the agenda is going to entail, but I'm sure we'll get a discussion around winter sports and also MCAS. Well, that is the winter sport update at this time.
I have to say, I'm surprised. I didn't expect to get, uh, guidance around winter sports until the spring from the state. But, um, it's just, I, and I, I, you know, again, I, I, I turned my, uh, mic off there for a second because I, I, I just want to express for the record and for the minutes, my extreme frustration with the, um, the way that the state has provided guidance, uh, that is only guidance and not directive and, uh, is offered to us after weeks, weeks of planning, because we've been left on our own to do this stuff. And it's just, it's just not the way to run the state. It's just not the way to run a business.
So I'm gonna jump on that. Uh, I also wish the state would get us the news before I read it in the newspaper. You know, quite often, I mean, today's news, um, tonight's rather, Sean gave it to us like a half an hour before it was on boston.com, but usually he's late. And that's not Sean's fault. That's him getting it late from the state, you know? It's shocking to me that the, somebody out there is calling a reporter before they tell the superintendents what's up.
Well, I'll, if I may, I, um, Mr. Hockeiser and I were talking earlier today regarding, um, policy subcommittee work. And, uh, he informed me of the memo that came across regarding how the January MCAS tests were canceled. And, and, and I don't think the superintendents, we were preparing, uh, for at least a month or so on, uh, the MCAS makeup for the junior class. Um, so that was a surprise with that memo that came across, uh, the email to the server today. So, so that I'm sure, um, my colleagues and the superintendents around the state will, um, on the ninth will express some of our concerns. on the ninth, will express some of our concerns with with some of the communication that goes out before the superintendents into other districts now at a time.
Because I I found it on Twitter.
Right.
It wasn't like, you know, I had any inside scoop. It was it was on Twitter. Sean, could I ask you a question about scheduling? I know we had talked about having a remote day for the juniors to take, a remote week for the juniors to take the MCAS exams.
Correct.
And traditionally, the high school has a midterm or a final week in January. Can I, can we assume that that's not going to happen this year? And that we're going to have the same hybrid schedule throughout?
The, and we can have Mr. Wolf, I think, come in on the twenty-first, but the planning for the high school was to finish off that semester one work on the week before the juniors are going to come in, the week before the January twenty-fifth. So I'm not sure if it's going to be a traditional midterm week that was planned. I can give Mr. Wolf provide a little more detail on that. But the goal was to close off the semester one academics. So when the juniors were coming into the test, that they could focus on the test. And then the new quarter or the new semester would have began on the twenty-fifth. So.
Okay. I mean, I'm always in favor of just not having a week off to take tests. So if that's the way we went, I'd be super happy with that.
Oh, great. I'll have, we'll put it as part of our December twenty-first agenda item to kind of talk through that a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Do we have committee reports? I know that that the report for for joint ed is that it has been thankfully postponed from tonight till till the twenty-first. And it'll be a remote meeting before our meeting. Finance?
Yeah, finance, yeah, finance, we met on November seventeenth, a pretty light agenda. We talked about, I guess, the losses we've had year-to-date in the food service, and a lot of that is attributed to the fact that, you know, the meal count is down, which means fewer reimbursed meals. But Nancy felt like we could try to get the funds through other budget lines. We also have loss of a client offset that Chartwells will provide us. But we're down for the year so far about forty-six thousand dollars. And we did one transfer, which was ten thousand dollars from math textbooks to library software at the high school to acquire a software subscription. That was it.
Policy, I know that, Dave, you and I had an exchange earlier today, if you want to report out.
Yeah, I guess the legal team has been looking at the fundraising policy that we wrote up. I'm going to reach out and talk to them directly tomorrow and see if we can have something drafted for at least a first read on the twenty-first. I also wanted to check while I have everybody here, if Sean and Sheila, if you guys can, if we can meet next Tuesday, so that if we wanted to have something, does that work for you guys?
It should, I'll check, but.
The fifteenth? Okay.
I'm on my phone, so I don't know if I can check that.
Okay, that's fine. Just get back to me.
What time are you thinking?
I wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you have something constricting you, we can work around you.
Okay.
Just let me know. Okay, send me an email.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the eighth looks good to me.
It's the the fifteenth.
Oh, the fifteenth. Yeah, that looks good to me. I just tend to stay away from one thirty to two thirty, but outside of that.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, good. I think I did, I just actually wanted to jump back a little bit to the finance report and just just point out that the challenges that we've got going forward and we're experiencing right now with lunches are happening in every district in the in the Commonwealth. And one of the concerns that we talked about at the finance committee meeting was, you know, how long businesses like Chartwells are going to be able to sustain taking these kinds of hits before it doesn't work for them anymore. And they may either leave or not be successful as a business. And the concern would be, you know, who's going to replace them? We've had very few bids on the meals programs, and we may need to even be thinking about going back to doing our own meals. So at this point, whatever plan Sean and Pam can come up with and Nancy can come up with, try to find some alternative funding to support and tide us over this this difficult time, I think, is going to be really welcome. But again, it's not just us. It's it's all across the Commonwealth.
Finally, just wanted to be sure you have on your calendars that I think I mentioned it at our last meeting, but the joint city council and school committee meeting that normally happened in November that we pushed out is happening on January twelfth. And, you know, obviously, would most likely be remote. I'm sure it will be remote and we'll send out more details.
Thank you. We have gotten a lot of work done tonight, both in executive session and in public session. And in a lot of ways, we've sort of locked in where we're headed for the next several years. On that happy note, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I can second.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.